Good morning, everyone, and I'd like to welcome you here today on this Tuesday, October tenth of two thousand and twenty-three. To the Jackson County Board of Supervisors meeting. And with me today, Ed Donchranker, Nynth Legel, myself, Mike Steinis, are your county supervisors. We have Shelley here today from the Auditor's Office, the owner from I T helping us out. Luann, our executive assistants in the background, and Mary is here from the media. Joel is here for security purposes. And first on our agenda today is Mr. Todd Keeney, our Jackson County Engineer. Good morning.
Good morning. So I don't really have a whole lot, but uh. On here for discussion is the uh. Private road um. Request uh that the CPKC made and that we formally. Denied their request to take that section of of road over. Uh from that would connect Smith Ferry over to uh the County Road. Uh three hundred and ninety-fifth Avenue. So. I guess there was some additional discussion between. Landowners in the area in the railroad about. If the county would take over the road, then they would agree to create a a bigger quiet zone there.
So I guess I'm misunderstanding that, and our county attorney kind of said that maybe I was misunderstanding what that was happening. It to me, or that's what was happening, that they agreed not to blow the horn. It broke. Was it a strong-armed tactic, or is it something? You know, when we left it the last time, we left it, we were gonna take your recommendation to say. To them to say, you know, I'm gonna have to have time, you know, it's gonna be, you know, like Don said, it has to be built to specs, it has to be agreed by. Your department to take it over, uh da-da-da-da-da, you know, um, is it possible to put that road in? And let the landowners maintain it? What would be the difference to the railroad if the landowners maintain it? They maintain the road in front of their homes now?
Yeah, I don't. I I don't know that much about the finances of that, so if if the landowners are responsible and it stays a private road. I don't know if they assume the financial responsibility to plow snow, rock it, do whatever. Or if that's a uh something that the railroad reimburses them for. If it's their responsibility, then I can see why they would want the county to take it over, because they don't have that responsibility to maintain the road, so. I don't know that much about the finances of it, so that'd be a conversation I would have to have with. The railroad or 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 what happened, whoever else is involved in that, but I I don't know. I could see why they would want the county to take it over, because the railroad doesn't want to maintain roads. And private citizens probably don't want to pay for them to maintain the road. Um. You know, really, this, the reason for this road is being driven by. The railroad wanting building additional siding that they potentially could block. Through that other crossing and then have this crossing, because they're blocking the other one, so. I mean, I don't know.
My fear is if the private citizens decide, though, okay, we can take it, we'll plow this snow, we'll maintain this new driveway. And then we get flooding like we had this summer or this spring. You you don't have access, and then we're gonna be fielding complaints because we can't get in, and what are you guys gonna do? And we're like, well, it's not our, not our pick, it's not ours, we can't do anything, but. We're still gonna, you guys will still be taking a brunt of the calls, we need to have this, and then. I don't know where we're at, I don't know for. I think if we're gonna have leverage to get it to a certain standard, this is it.
Yeah, and then there's a another, I guess, tangent to this is the Smith Ferry Road. Will be improved or raised as part of this. So they're talking about ra- looking at this profile, they're gonna raise that about two point nine feet. Uh and I talked to a gentleman that has his house right. Just down the road from where this proposed connection will be. And he's worried about him getting being able to get up to that road. Well, I think. Two reasons they're proposing on raising it is, one, because of the flooding issue, and two, that. Right, if they raise it almost three feet, it makes the gradient. From so that the slope from the new road to up to get to the crossing at ten percent, that's the max slope you can have. On a on a public road. For for the design standards, so um. It's not, it's not an ideal situation. So the reason I want to put it on the agenda is uh. After my discussion with uh. Uh Greg Hammond. He was wanting to know if we would. The county would. Consider negotiating. Changing what the. The railroad has for design of the existing road as far as. Making it more suitable for maintenance. Specifically, they're 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 building it to the minimum, the bare minimum standards for width and shoulder width, and on the. This whole, I don't know what you call it, the. East side of the road, there's like seven or eight hundred foot of guard rail the whole way. And then around this curve, right where it comes back to three ninety-fifth, there's another two or three hundred foot of guard rail, so. Can you imagine? It's like, it'd be like a tunnel with guard rail on both sides and then steep slopes on either side. Guard rail that whole way is gonna be a a maintenance nightmare, because you've got to plow snow around it, over it, whatever, what have you, so. Uh if we were gonna. Negotiate with them, one of the things I would want to do is widen the top. Widen the shoulder, flatten the four slopes, so we can eliminate this the guard rail, because the guard rail, to me, is a big issue. Because every time he gets hit, you gotta go out and fix it too, so you're talking about eight hundred feet of guard rail or seven hundred something feet of guard rail, so.
Yeah, I don't imagine somebody traveling more than fifteen miles an hour on that road, but I guess it's possible, and then, you know, we talked about. You know, if it's a private road, if it is a private road, and the and the citizens will be, or who are landowners, not landowners even, I mean, structure owners. Not even land, they don't own the land, so it's structure owners. It's like, if you go from north of Bellevue and you go two miles, you've got. Six, seven, eight lanes across the river, which I. They they're maintained by. I would guess landowners, I don't know that, I guess.
Yeah, so again, I put it on the agenda, they requested it, they want to know if the county would be wel- willing to negotiate. Changing the road to make it more acceptable for the county to take it over, that's the request. So that's really I need to know if the board says, if you guys say, no, we're not, still not interested in it, we just soon have. That road stay private and uh the, you know, the property owners work with the the railroad to try and. You know, use whatever levers they have to get the quiet zone put in, and I think, like you said, that the railroad is proposing to. Agree. I guess, across the board, to do this. Quiet zone if. Somebody agrees to take over the maintenance of the road, and I think they would prefer it to be the county, but I don't know. I don't think the railroad cares whether you're county or private citizens.
Would you ever want to go up and take a look? I would go up there with you sometime, and we could look to see. If there's a viable solution, because. One thing I don't like, regardless of whether we know the people or not, this road coming across right across from. A set cabin where you're talking at least ten percent grade. Most of the people south of three thirty-fifth use these all year round, so now you got people driving, plow, it's snow, it's icy. The likelihood of somebody coming down a ten or twelve percent grade, sliding into said cabin. You know, becomes a lot greater, you know, there's just. There's a lot to see if maybe if they move that a little one way or the other, they could put up more of a landing platform when they cross the tracks into Smith Ferry. And down, um just to see if there's another viable solution. Because right now, we're all kind of talking, you know, whatever we can see on Google Maps and hypotheticals and. And all this stuff, and you know, if they moved it a little farther north, maybe between the last two cabins. Kind of split the difference, and they could put more of a landing zone on the east side of the tracks. Um would that be a viable solution? Um you know, it's just, it's just ideas, because right now. We want to help the citizens over the best we can, but if we're even gonna think about doing anything, we need to make sure it's the best solution for us and not just the cheapest for the railroad.
So like, a- again, I. I just want to know if you want.
Okay, so here is my position with them before, and it still is my position. It seems like a strong-armed tactic, and I'm gonna take your recommendations to say, this is what we want, if we're gonna do it, I mean, if you say. I'm gonna take a recommendation from my engineer that says, no, we really don't want to maintain this road, and it's a liability to us if it is. It's it's too steep, uh it it makes. It it makes no sense for us to do this because of the quiet zone, if there, if that's a strong-armed tactic, I don't know.
Because some of what the gentleman said when he was here, it sounded like them arms were gonna be down unless they were blocking that. Three forty-fourth, is it?
Three thirty-four.
Or three thirty-four. And then, if that is the case, how do you, how do you plow snow there? If the arms are constantly down.
You mean the gate, the gatearms at the track itself?
Or that second entrance.
Yeah.
Are gonna be, from what that gentleman was told, they were gonna be down unless. They had that other road blocked, and then they would be. Activated up. So one, you got the whole. By your EMS track, which access are we taking, you know, type of thing? Because you know that's gonna get missed being called into the law center on which ones down or up or taking or not taking. And then, yeah, how do you plow snow? You're coming through this ten percent hill. Even if they leave you a spot to turn, we all know you still have that berm that comes off, just like it does in our driveways and everything else. If they have arms down, you can't.
Yeah, that that's one of the things that we would take, we would have to have an actual turnaround bill. Because we would not, we would come to the west gatearm, and that would be the end of. Public road as you cross the tracks and then go down to Smith Ferry, that would all remain private still, so. I mean, I guess I just need to know, do you want me to try and reach back out to their design engineer and say? We may consider taking this over if you do these. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight things changing your design? Do you want me to do that? Yes or no?
I I guess my thought is, yes, you probably can pursue that, but don't make a commitment to get it over, you know what I mean? If, like you said, if you build it to.
Consider it, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, if you build it to your specs. And with the shoulder without the guard rail, we would consider it, so.
I mean, it would have to be, yeah, everything that you think is needed for. Us to maintain that road and for that. Little section of road not to end up costing the county.
I mean, it's a real great.
Uh no, I got training. I'll be back on Thursday, I believe. That's tomorrow.
No.
No, third day, yeah, sorry, to the Thursday, are you?
I'll be, I'll be coming back Thursday.
Okay, if you want to go over and take a look, I'd be, I'd be, I'll go over and take a look and see it, see what you think as far as viable. Possible solutions, if there is any, because again, whatever you recommend is what I'd be willing to go with, but. If there's a way maybe moving things, changing it.
And is racing Smith, Smith Ferry Road going to cause an issue for the homes that are along?
Yeah, so. One other thing I might do is, do you think, do we want to try and get somebody from AECom out there to, their design engineer? When we look at it and say, here's our concerns, what options do we have? Can we? Can we look at a different touchdown point where we cross the tracks? Can we, are you? Is the railroad dead set on raising Smith Ferry Road? Why, I mean, why are you, is the court forcing you to raise it for access, or what what is driving that?
I think it's for us, because, you know, if it floods, people can't get in or out. If that track is blocked.
And then, I don't know if it's us, but I think this last year, it was two foot six or something. If they're going two foot nine, the water was up to two foot six on that road, if that's the measurement you're looking at. You know, you can, you can rough it off and say three foot, but I think the water was at height this year at two foot six.
And I think to make that access. Accessible.
Yeah.
They have to raise that for the flooding period.
Yeah, you can see it in this profile, it's pretty severe, so like, this is what it is right there. That's, that's the little access, and it goes basically straight up in the air to get over the tracks.
So then you're limiting them from the center.
I mean, there's a way we could do on county ordinance, and let's say we leave Smith Ferry alone. We say. When the floodwater of the Mississippi is above X feet. You absolutely, under no circumstances can block this track, uh three thirty-fourth. Or any real line that.
Yeah, see, I don't know about the legality, I don't know what we have as far as legal. Rights to do something like that, I don't, and the other question is, is the railroad's gonna do this siding project regardless? I don't know how, what the county has for recourse, what can we force them to do and not force them to do? I don't know what that, I don't know that answer.
And I had this conversation with the structure owners up there, you know, all of a sudden. Red flags are going up and here and there, and and all of a sudden the court says, we don't need this. You know? So I I don't know, it's it's leased land, so it's it's uh, it's a lot of gray area, I should say.
So I guess I will reach out to AECom and and. And say, well, we we may, we would consider.
Yeah.
Taking it over possibly if we we need to have substantial di- design changes made to the road, and then I also want to say. But we would like to meet with a rep out there and look at. Look at the the where they're proposing and options and that kind of thing, because I need to get, I feel like we we need a lot more information. Uh before we start making any kind of.
Commitment.
Commitment or 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 even agreeing to things in the future, so.
I would agree. And thank you for looking into it and talking to our attorney anyway about it, and.
Okay, um and then. Uh there's a meeting in Monmouth uh Wednesday night. Uh to talk about. You know, they got that city B R money to do the East Line Bridge. Um so. If you recall, they got the Rural County Transportation Program funding, the twenty-five thousand. To help to to reimburse us to do the design, do the survey, all that stuff. Well. That bridge. Um. Is eligible for inclusion on the National Register, so we have to do this. There has to be an evaluation done to consider, like, three different alternatives for the bridge, like, do nothing. Build a structure at a different location without affecting the the historical integrity of it. Or rehabilitate the bridge, so you basically have to show that replacing the bridge is the best option. So we got a price from uh Origin to do that, because that's not something we would be able to handle in-house. Um it was like ten to twenty thousand dollars. So I'm gonna go to the city and say, here's the deal, if you want to move forward with this project, we have to have this feasibility study done. It's gonna cost X amount of dollars. What I'm asking you is, I could see them saying, hey, will the county pay for this?
Again, I'm gonna go on your kind of a recommendation, but I don't see any value in that bridge, uh that that doesn't go anywhere to me.
I've talked to several people in Monmouth, and nobody wants it fixed.
Okay.
They want Main Street fixed, they're like, because, okay, you fix that bridge, the road to and from it is impassable. So who's gonna, that's a city road, are they gonna improve that? Because again, off of Main Street, you're talking three blocks.
Yeah, so I've heard several people say, scratch their head, well, it's been closed for a few years, why, and nobody's really. Complained about it, so I I'm on the impression that. Replacing the bridge might not be the best use of the money, so they could take that twenty-five thousand dollar, I think, still. And I, that was my next question is, they were supposed to use it. Their application was to use it, they were reimbursing us to do this, that, this bridge. I would say. I would offer them, they could take that twenty-five thousand dollars and put it towards whatever streets, they just need, they would need to submit a. A revised, like, application saying, hey, we're not gonna use the money for this now, we're gonna use it for this on streets. And then we get that in, we'd say, yeah, that's a viable project, go ahead and use the money, so I just kind of want to make sure that. If I communicate that to them, that's, you guys are on board and agree with that, so I'm not gonna. Doesn't sound like the county wants to offer to pay for the feasibility study, which I I tend to agree with. Um the problem is, you know, if we don't do that, the the money for the bridge is gonna go back to the DOT, which. It's not like we get to pick another bridge to do for the city, the money will go back to the to the DOT, so just.
But so they got to be up keeping the road to and from, and what's it gonna take, and are they gonna come to us and ask us? To bring that road back up to standard, and you know, again, if it's in their city limits, that's what they're doing. That's all expenses they should have been considering before they applied for this grant to renew this bridge, that nobody's driven on it at least ten years.
Yeah, so then one of the questions is, what happens if they just leave the bridge and it falls in, and it just falls in, you just have to, you're responsible to remove it from the creek, basically.
It's historic.
Well, once it's laid in the in the ditch.
Well, I guess my final answer.
We had one of the horseshoe pond that they vacated, and we sold it, yeah. Nobody bought it, moved it, and put it out on their property, so maybe they could sell their bridge and haul it away.
If they vacate the road, they probably could do that, yeah.
They vacated that road a long time ago.
Well.
Not officially. I guess our answer is, we're not interested in paying for that, no.
And then they could turn around and use the twenty-five thousand, need to apply, make a different application or revise application, how they want to spend the money. We'll review it, if the board agrees, then we can authorize them to use the money on something else.
I would agree to that.
And then their their state B R money is gonna go back to the state, right, okay.
Thanks, man.
Yep, and then uh. I don't know if you guys review claims too much, but we got a big claims period coming up here.
You were the whole claimist of all, but ten percent of them.
So I just.
Is there a bigger one coming? What? Is there a bigger one coming? Well, this this one, that's the big one.
Well, there's two pieces of equipment on there.
There's two boxes and a grater and.
Yeah, and then uh we got part of the paving, the thirty, or.
The striping and stuff.
Striping.
So it's eight hundred and some thousand, is that the way to go about it?
I think, I think it was out of the eight hundred and some thousand, you were seven hundred and some.
Yeah, yeah, so good.
It's improvement.
It's it's the new road grader, it's a couple of boxes.
Yeah, we know.
Is it a raise? It's a raise in our infrastructure.
Who who had the most claims? Oh, a raise.
Oh, no, he wins. I, all I could say is, they were, they wouldn't give me, they wouldn't give me any uh COVID money. Because we had a four and a half million dollar carryover balance, so I'm taking care of it.
Like, thanks, Todd. All right, are there any visitors or citizens here today that would like to approach the board? Or seen, none? Uh next on our agenda is Mr. Leo McGary and uh Chair for the R I F, R L F Committee. And Mr. Matt Speck from E C I A. Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning. Thanks for having us here today, um please have a request for more family farms, creamery, and more local. Uh the amount, the loan amount is seventy-seven thousand four hundred, it's to purchase a larger. Uh additional equipment or a larger pasteurizer and vat for their cheese-making equipment. Um purchases eighty-seven for, got it proposed to be paid back over seven years at an interest rate of six percent. Um feels like they have the demand uh for the cheese, they just, the the equipment they have is. Is limiting, it takes, you know, like, twenty-four hours to to kind of do the amount of cheese they need to do. And so it's just kind of a a fairly significant efficiency um improvement here, and there was. There are some situations with the amount of milk they have to get in, but they have to take in, I think, uh.
Five thousand gallons.
Five thousand gallons.
They can't process that much, so then they're. Wasting that as well, so.
Good.
So I guess my first question would be, the equipment that they have now, that you said is not doing the job, is that part of the financing we have on the first round of?
Correct. And some of that they may sell and pay down. Probably this note, because it's higher interest rate, but they would like to maybe keep some of the smaller stuff to make, because you get into different. Batch sizes for different Gudas and Kobe's and all that sort of stuff, so they could. The less popular stuff, they might keep some of the smaller equipment to make that sort of cheese. But then the bigger stuff, which is more popular, they would use this new equipment for.
So our collateral, this new one, will be the new equipment and a personal guarantee, is that correct?
Yes.
Any other comments?
Um, yeah, it's expedited. This one, and everything's good, payment history, all that kind of stuff, everyone's good, no troubles on that point.
Correct.
Well, I can see local businesses thriving and trying to expand, and. They've met all the criteria. And this is gonna help them grow, I don't see why they'd be. Why damn would I be against it, so I'm for it.
We'll make a motion to approve.
One second.
Have motion and a second to approve the um loan request, R L F loan request as presented. All those in favor, say aye. I oppose, same sign. Motion carried.
How much time is left on the room?
I think that was a seven years, well, and there may be only a year or two into it.
Yeah, there's probably only a year or two into it.
Maybe it took forever to get that equipment, that was the whole COVID.
Yeah.
They were delayed, 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 and. And yet we're actually here.
What's the music, sixty-five, seven dollars or something like that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
They got a good chunk of paper down there.
So are we also having to um approve the transfer agreement, is that correct?
Yes.
I have a motion and a second to approve the transfer agreement for the R L F loan as presented. For more local, all those in favor, say aye. I oppose, same sign. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Pretty much, and I know Lisa keeps asking, have you officially, your name, chairman of the.
We've done that, but I don't know what we need to do from this side.
Okay, well, can we just make sure we get that ironed out?
Yeah.
You know, so.
It it was, it was made in the the boardman in the meeting, but, yeah, I don't know, I'll talk to Lisa and probably Luann.
So he was sitting in Roger's chair, is that what you're saying?
Yeah. I mean, got a lot to learn, so.
Um the other thing, the gather we've all contacted too, so we'll probably be sending down a transfer agreement, they're. In need of that three hundred thousand that the board approves, so.
Fair.
So that'll probably be coming in the next week or so, so.
Okay.
You're much, yeah.
Thank you. Yeah, to see what.
Okay, so I don't see Lori, and I don't see Marty yet, uh have we had any contact with Marty, is he gonna show up today? Well, it's not on the agenda till nine forty, so uh. Shelley, would you be prepared?
Sure.
Your agenda?
Um. First motion is to approve the minutes of the October third, twenty twenty-three, board proceedings as written by Auditor Smith. And authorize publication in the official newspapers, so move.
Second, most of the second to approve the minutes of the October third, twenty twenty-three board proceedings as presented, all those in favor, say aye. I oppose, same sign. Motion carried.
And then I have a motion to approve the and authorize the Auditor's Office to issue warrants and the publication of the claims listing. In the amount of eight hundred and seventy-one thousand, three hundred and eighty-six dollars and ninety-three cents.
So move.
Second.
Most of the second to approve the claims uh. In the amount of eight hundred and seventy-one thousand, three hundred and eighty-six dollars and ninety-three cents, any further discussion?
Oh, just FYI, this is for road graders, this is for a couple of dump truck boxes, this is for a lot of highway striping, and so there's some big ticket items in there, so.
Well, secondary roads got most of it, so that includes improvements. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I oppose, same sign. Motion carried.
And then I need a motion to approve a five-day special class C retail alcohol license with outdoor service. To Saint Patrick's Church um at two eight nine one four forty-sixth Avenue in Bernard. Effective October twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three, to October thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Also, a second to approve the five-day special class C liquor license as presented, and just a note, that's our annual festival fundraiser. All those in favor, say aye. Run aye, oppose, same sign. Motion carried.
And then I have a change orders. Um authorize the Chair's signature and proof change order number three dash three to Kraus Plumbing and Heating. For an additional ninety-seven thousand, nine hundred and thirty dollars to complete the expansion project at the L E C.
This, I think, is their.
And I expect that coincides with the bit that was presented to us previously.
I would assume so, but I can't.
Verify?
Verify that.
I know there was um. Negotiations still going on, so I'm guessing that's the end of the negotiation.
So move it.
Second.
Most of the second to approve the change order number three to Kraus Plumbing and Heating as presented, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I oppose, same sign. Motion carried.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you. And Luann? You're on the hot seat?
My favorite place. Good morning.
Good morning.
Okay, calendar for this week, um four o'clock this afternoon. Is the Hookah River Watershed Management Authority Executive Meeting by Zoom for Don. Um at six-thirty tonight is the Comprehensive Plans Steering Committee meeting for any of you that want to attend. And they just sent me the PowerPoint for that, so I am printing that off for you as we speak. Wednesday, October eleventh at nine A M is Mike's turn on the Just Talk Show. One P M tomorrow is zero to five in sixty minutes. Meeting by Zoom for Nin, um if she chooses to go to that, that's at a new time. Um. Also, at one thirty tomorrow is the Vera French Clinic at Duck Creek. The ribbon cutting ceremony, that would be in Benton, or for any of you that want to attend that. Thursday. October twelfth at ten A M, um Jack will be going to Woodward, Iowa for the Iowa H H S Council meeting. And I have on your um calendar in your packet that is a. Uh Jackson County Area Tourism Association meeting at noon that day, it is on the nineteenth rather than the twelfth. Monday, October sixteenth at one thirty P M. Is Waste Authority meeting for Mike at the Transfer Station, and that's apparently a permanent new time for that, one thirty.
New time and place also.
Right, okay. Um three P M is the Regional Governing Board meeting. I'm in Davenport for Jack, I. Um, in Davenport for Jack. I think Ninn is the alternate for that. Seven PM Monday night is zoning commission meeting for any of you that want to attend that. And I think we also have Together We Build meeting that night at seven o'clock. I haven't got confirmation, but Ninn probably knows that. Tuesday, our next area meeting will be Tuesday, October seventeenth at nine AM. And that afternoon at two PM is a Mississippi Valley Workforce CEO meeting by Zoom for Don. And at five PM that night is a Conservation Board meeting. In Hurstville for any of you that went to attend that, and I know Ninn usually goes to that. Um, I have two things to discuss on my business list today. One is discussion possible action on the Pine Valley. Maintenance agreement that Nate introduced. A week or so ago.
So just a brief update, um, I did have a conversation with our county attorney and with Nathan um, regarding this agreement, and. I guess we do at this time, maybe we should just um, not take any action on that yet uh, as far as some wording and. Maybe liability issues you need to talk to insurance regarding it. So we will not take any action. We'll leave it on the agenda.
Okay, all right. Um. The other piece of business is the Head Start. Building lease. We met with them last week, so we need to make some final decisions as to what we wanna do.
So we're on a month to month basis with them as, as agreed, and we have, between again. Um, several individuals and the county attorney, we have not spelled out all our term agreements yet. You know, I would suggest that we not take any action on that one either. Leave it on the agenda though.
And we're just leaving it at the, at the current amount, right? It's, okay.
Yeah, it's on a month by month, on, on currently.
Right.
Do you wanna spearhead getting that finalized, or do you want?
Um, I think Lisa already had talked to Mr. Keys, is that correct, as, as I understand it? Yes. Is somebody's that on board?
I guess your time is up.
I guess my time is up, yes.
Leave some back on bed. And if it's important, we can recess.
That was all my business that I had and everything got tabled, I think. I don't have anything.
Um.
Does other board business?
Which is the calendar?
Um.
Which was the calendar?
Oh, okay.
Okay, is that your report? Thank you.
Yep.
All right, we were joined, we are now joined by Lori Roland with Lori Roland, our Jackson County zoning administrator. Good morning, Lori.
Good morning. How's the board?
Good.
Groovy.
That's what I like to hear.
I had, it's a blanket. He gotta get out of bed.
Well, it used to be.
I had frost this morning, how about you?
Uh, maybe when Terry got out, but not by the time I.
Six o'clock there was frost on my.
Oh, like I was out of bed yet.
Risk.
Yeah, would you walk in?
No. I'm drinking coffee at six.
Sixty two degrees in the house, though, so.
Oh, it's cooling off.
Yeah. Yeah.
Should be sixty two in that house all the time, isn't it?
No. No.
Well, good morning anyway.
Yeah. Yeah, so anyway, let's just start with. Uh. The, well, the, the update on the comprehensive plan, uh, Laura Carstens, Dan Fox and Jack Studer. And I met via conference call, while Laura was in my office, but the guys were interviewed. Uh, so we met and just went over where we are with the. Uh, comprehensive plans, so I'm kind of tasked with updating you guys once a month on maps, so. That is this. This meeting then. So everything's moving, moving forward. The first. Uh, steering committee meeting is tonight um, in the basement. And I know it's on your calendar, however, uh, I did talk to Laura about it. Don't feel like you guys have to be there. Uh, you guys are, this is gonna come to you guys anyway. Uh, and as far as the, the steering committee, I don't, if you guys wanna be there, you're more than welcome. But at the same time. The steering committee, you know, we'd hate to have them looking to you for answers. Because. You know, they're, they're part of the steering committee, but I know you guys are really good about separating. You know, yourselves.
So I guess my thought on it would be that, yeah, I don't, I want them to be open with you and talk freely.
Absolutely.
Not be prejudged by what we may be thinking or what we've already talked about.
Right.
You know, I, I just, I feel like, I mean, I had, I had talked to you previously about this, and I had prior commitments. My commitments have changed, but again, I don't want to.
Well, part of this is getting this wide variety of people is to get their pros, their ideas and their perspectives. And we don't, we want their perspective, not them to like what we wanna do, this, this, to kinda. Get the broad idea of where we need to go for the next twenty years.
Absolutely.
So.
Absolutely. So, uh, but anyway, that first meeting is set. The first public input session is set up for Monday. October twenty third. It's gonna be ran open house style. Here in the, here in the courthouse basement from four to six. And uh, the first. Uh, newspaper notices are going out in uh, next week's paper. Uh. I just. Found that out. So I thought it was going out in this week's paper, but it did not get out.
So our timelines are still, there's still a timeline for this one, sir, are you?
Yeah.
That's why you have.
Yep. So the, it'll be out on the eighteenth, and hopefully we can try to get some other media coverage.
Want me to mention that tomorrow?
Yes. Oh, excuse me. I just.
What time?
Uh, forty six.
Forty six?
Yep. Yep, it's gonna be ran open house style. So they don't have, they're not obligated for the whole two hour window. And I like the, Laura kind of walked me through it. I like it a lot. It's. It. It gets the input. People's input without. A lot of time on it.
Yes.
So, uh, but the calendar hasn't changed a whole lot. Uh. We're, we're still going forward. Um, we have draft, um, the commission will be meeting next week, the sixteenth. And uh, going over draft chapters, draft of chapters four and seven. And then also, um. ECIA is uh, kind of. Mapped out our land use maps better, so they're gonna. Kind of approve the way the land use maps are currently. Currently being used, so this is current land use, not projected land use, so. Uh, we have that. Uh. And we had some really nice help from other departments. And Laura would send a draft chapter up, say, community services and uh, county services. And we forwarded those off to like Emergency Management, Sheriff's Office, the Health Department and different offices that had. Items mentioned in that. And they were, other departments were really great in providing their input. And. Making corrections or changes as, as they were needed, which they know their department's better than anybody else, so. That's, that's why I thought it was important to reach out to them. And then the. I don't know how many responses they've had off the questionnaires that were sent to the um, department managers yet. Um, I know I sent one in back in. Uh.
I did also.
Good. Good. So, uh. I've been hitting the pavement pretty hard and. I am so happy to see that the fruits of our labor, I can see it in the numbers of the participants we're getting. In the surveys. So the last three weeks, we've had. Uh, well, last week was probably about fifty eight. Week before fifty six, the week before, probably forty eight, so. We, we can see when we're out pounding the pavement, trying to get into different groups, city council meetings.
Making a difference.
It's making a difference.
So we appreciate the input, we really do, and uh, it'd be interesting to, um. See the results.
Thank you. I'm looking forward to it.
Yeah, no, it, it could be very interesting.
Okay. And we still have, um. Meetings with different city councils, had one last night. Uh, I'm getting into the Bellevue Bread Basket on the twenty fifth, I think. One of those days, twenty sixth, I don't know, it's on my calendar. Uh, and I've been at the Bellevue, heard the McCoker root share twice. And, uh. Getting into those different groups. We're seeing different survey responses to differ, to different things. It's, it's to.
Have, have you been to like, um, what, a list of, list from years ago, all the meetings that go on, of being your veterans and your Legionaire guys and your. EMS and stuff like that, so I don't know how.
I haven't been all those, even though I was talking to Bjorn's dad, and it's like, oh, we should have got you into the fire, the fire meeting. Last week.
And Bellevue was last night too.
But the county one, though.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
County one, so, but maybe uh, we can do that for the, the early December ones, so. But no, if you wanna share a list with me, um. And actually, there was one group I reached out to, I reached out to the. Uh, Historical Society. And I can present our information there, but I have to do it. In historical content, with, in historical context. So I'd have to, I need to get a little bit more history on. Jackson County, the comprehensive plan and how, uh. How things have transpired over the years.
We'd like to make our vision not so historic and in the past as well as moving forward.
Well, that's what I wanted to.
We don't have one, there's no history.
Well, well, and maybe, yeah, but there's a bit, so, and there was attempts, so, but I'm.
Historically, we've never looked into the future very carefully.
Oh. Yeah, you can say that, I'm not, well, I maybe have said it, I don't know, but. Okay, so we have, I'm gonna move past the, that part. And, uh. No, it's like, well, you guys complimented me last time, cause I didn't take up happier mornings, so I tried to do that again for you. Uh, are you guys ready to move on to that resolution?
Sure.
Have a chance to look it over, Shelley?
We did.
Everything.
And I assume that these are the numbers that we agreed to when we talked about it.
Yep.
Can you tell me, Lori, when the last, I know you, you spoke of it last time, when the last time we had any changes to our permitting fees?
Two thousand fourteen.
Two thousand fourteen.
And I actually had that in the resolution. The second, whereas.
Yes, ma'am. That was a good question, wasn't it?
Yes. I knew you'd ask it, so I had it in writing.
So moved.
I'll second that.
That a motion and a second to approve the resolution uh, number?
Oh, uh, nine nine five dash ten dash ten dash twenty twenty three. And the effective date on it's December first.
December first, or I thought you were shooting for January?
Well, we were, and then it was questioned if there was any possibility that we would have. Any of our, uh. Documents ready for geo permitting? And when I reset the station, that was a possibility. And I know you guys wanted to make sure the fees were in place before we, before we went live with our.
It made no sense to put it up on December first, the geo permitting, and then make them go back through and. Redo all the figures on January first.
So that was the initial goal.
Okay.
Initial thought.
So it's still.
So the motion and the second stands?
Yes.
A motion and a second to approve resolution nine nine five dash ten dash ten, dash twenty twenty three. As presenting, uh, changing the. And adjusting the fees for zoning and permitting as presented. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carried.
I knew she'd ask, I saved her. So I saved her, um.
Thank you.
And, uh, I know we have some things coming up. For next meeting for Leisure Lake, man. I did have an interesting conversation with a person from there yesterday. And uh, there was people that were having trouble serving, cause their addresses aren't correct and can't locate them. Think I located one, so, don't worry, worse now. So we've learned there's one that we haven't been able to serve that hopefully we can, that be the initial service.
So your last report appears that we are gaining ground, and there's some, been some significant changes and, and uh. Of keeping and maintenance, so hopefully we can pursue that and, and not cry wolf and move on, so.
Yeah, well, hopefully we can keep, yeah, keep them.
Definitely an encouragement to everybody to keep moving forward, because.
Oh, that was the phone call I had yesterday. Don't stop now.
We are moving forward on our end, so.
I got another kudos. Thanks for keeping it going and all that stuff, so.
Good.
So this uh, extension will come up next week, is that what you're?
Okay, yes, sir. We're, we don't even need to discuss it now, I don't think.
Nope, ain't on the agenda.
All right, thank you much.
All right, thank you.
Yeah. Thank you.
All right, let me back up here. All right, next on our agenda would be Mr. Marty Hoodlick, our Jackson County Mayor and Supervisor. Good morning.
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 Chili day in Jackson County.
I had some frost this morning. I don't buy the airport, you have any?
Yeah, yeah, not much, but some.
Yeah.
Um. Things that my department has been working on, uh. The Pinrose Garage, uh, been about two and a half days. On and off, cleaning it out, getting rid of that scrap lumber, um, iron. Which I have about a half a dump truck load on my dump truck. Can I donate that to the? Explain the engine? Is that okay? All right. The, the wood I took. To the care facility and threw it on the pile there that we're gonna burn here someday. Uh, cause it was just strictly wood. Um. The senior citizen building, uh. I worked on the urinal down there and, uh. Believe her name is Kimberly. Said that the ceiling tile seemed to be sagging, so I went down and checked it out. And there's an attic fan in there that runs on humidity. And was not working, so I fixed that. Hopefully got it working. It seems to be working, then it'll take care of some of the moisture problem down in there. Um. From summer to winter, we take our mowing equipment up to the care facility and store it there. And then we bring all the snow equipment back. Uh, we're gonna start doing that, cause we think we're done mowing lawn. While we're talking about the senior center, where are we at as far as that sidewalk improvement, that tripping hazard right outside the door? I, I got one bid, I'm waiting on another bid, um. I'm having a hard time getting a bid. I wish we'd known we were gonna pour this out here. And we'd informed that and poured it with that, but that's happened. Rather quickly on here. Um, I will make another phone call today to get ahold of. Uh, I got, I called three people, I got one bid back. Um, and I'll see if I can get a bid. Another bid quickly. Um, like I said, we're switching. Taking grass equipment up, bringing our snow equipment back. Um. The, I guess, I think it's the head start part of the building down there. Um, leaky faucets, um, uh, changed a couple bu, uh, ballast. And light bulbs down there. I helped with the parking lot out here, we poured it. Bull floated it, broomed it. Covered it. Uncovered it, bull floated again. And broomed it again, because it got rained on. Um, of course, then somebody had to walk in it too on the. North end, we had cones all the way around it, the back hole and the skid loader there. And somebody did manage to walk through it, not bad. Um. Turned out decent for getting rained on, uh. Everything runs this way, covering it really didn't help it. You know what I mean? That might have impacted some of it, but.
Looks good.
That's what I thought.
Good improvement to that parking lot.
Yes.
Got rid of it, and we got the valves shut off and everything done, timely manner and work good. Appreciate it.
Joel, Joel Woods did an awesome job on that. Come down right on, pretty much right on top of the. Where the city marked it, so it worked out good. Um. Roger Mueller and his guys really, I thought, did a good job. Um. Um.
It was just great cooperation between all. Yeah, I appreciate the city's cooperation and everybody who was involved. I thank them all for that.
Yes, um. It's a good bunch of guys, um. The magnetic doors. And I don't know why, there's one over here and there's one over here, they keep coming loose. So we took that and I put lock tight on the screws this time, hopefully that'll help it going into the courtroom back there. Um. We changed the water fillers in the drinking fountain. We moved the spigot on the water fountain, because it was shooting. Away from the drains over here, shooting over here, so we took it apart, turned it, so it's landing on the drain. Just little things that we do around here. Um. The sheriff's office, we had to, uh. I worked on the shower, it went shut off. Uh, because it gets used. Nonstop. Uh, we had to cut a couple of padlocks off because the heat didn't work. And that's about as far as maintenance, but. The care facility needs a new wash machine. And that's about as far as maintenance, but the care facility needs a new wash machine. And I have bids for them, I uh I barely got two bid, can I present them to you today or not?
Wasn't on the agenda, probably, I I talked to Jared about there, they have a another wash machine there, that's.
Right.
Correct, so I guess, yeah, we didn't know that yesterday, we could have had it on the agenda probably before nine o'clock, we didn't know that, but.
And I dropped the ball on that, I knew I was gonna bring it in here, but I uh. I don't know if it was from pouring concrete or not, but I did something, my big toe, and I couldn't walk on it from Saturday, Sunday and Monday.
So I don't know if they're, I mean, do we have to have that on the agenda, is that a maintenance thing, I mean, is that a?
Spending limit?
Well, I talked to Lisa this morning cuz I was concerned about that, and she says we've done it before, like on the tile for the. The care facility up there, uh she says it's just a maintenance thing, she didn't see where we would have a problem with it.
I would guess that we can, you know, this is one of them issues that it's, I mean, it's something they need.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I I mean, it's it's, I guess it's.
We could always approve it next Tuesday, but to get it, what's the bids or?
Um are they available? Or is it something else to be ordered?
I can't answer that because Jared got these bids. I did check on the warranty and talk to Jared to see if he had a uh preference of which machine. Um he didn't. They both have the same, pretty much the same guarantee, and there's only like a hundred. Or ninety, ninety-four dollars difference in price.
Good.
But I do not know the availability. Uh I can check on that if you want, but I I do not know that answer.
The prices.
Okay, I. I have two bids, one is from Appliance Solution. Here in Macoka, which is one thousand two hundred and thirty-four dollars and ninety-nine cents. Uh the wash machine's a little cheaper, but it's eighty-five dollars to deliver it and set it up, okay? And then I have another bid from uh Doctor Appliance, which is out of Delmar, Iowa. And theirs is thirteen hundred and twenty-nine dollars even. And the delivery and setup is free and the hallway of the old one, if needed, is free. And like Jared said, he, they're both. Uh one is a Speed Queen and the other one is a Maytag, and they are both commercial units.
Okay, so who is, which ones which, Appliance Solutions is?
It's gonna be Speed Queen, I'm assuming.
No, Doctor Appliance.
Yeah.
The Speed Queen.
Yes.
And the warranty on Speed Queen, I think is, uh we bought ours, it was neat.
It's five year warranty.
Parts of labor.
Everything, yeah. Yes. I did check on that because the. Uh Doctor Appliance had that on air, but the Appliance Solution did not, so I called him. And made sure it had the same warranty or close to it.
And Jared did not have a.
What, what was the warranty for Appliance Solution?
It's five, five, it's same thing, five years, everything.
So basically, we're talking the same number, so after you put eighty-five dollars on there, you're looking at exact, almost.
Is eighty-five dollars extra, or is that included?
It's in, it's included, so the the wash machine itself was one thousand one hundred forty-nine dollars, ninety-nine cents. And then there was eighty-five dollars set up and delivery.
Okay, ninety dollar difference.
Yeah, ninety-four oh one.
Okay, and Jared did not have a preference?
No, he did not, I called him.
That's half of their dime, by the way.
Yes, it is.
I I was.
Whichever one's available.
Okay, all right, you know. I will let Jared do this because it's his. He's, he's working with it, but I won't give him, I think he's on vacation, I know he's on vacation somewhere up in Michigan.
Well, I would say go with whatever.
My recommendation would be the the cheaper bid that came through.
I would say check availability.
Yeah.
And if they're both available, take the cheaper one, but if one's not available and it's a week or two, three weeks out versus available now.
Yeah, I will do that.
We have a slight preference to keep it here in town, but.
Right.
I agree.
Okay, any other?
So you know, they help, the the Delmar people, we, cuz that one there, we always get them to service over here and they've been pretty good to us.
Appreciate their service.
We don't send emails on blinds.
Yeah, I I think I emailed. Becky to make sure, because they picked them out, I wanna make sure that what they want is what I order. So I think I'm, we're there, once I get that, then I will go for it.
Okay, so I've I've looked over a couple email threads that were going, that was been out there for a long time ago, I mean, we're talking six months ago, so let's. Get in touch with uh, if Becky was in charge of kinda setting that up and getting something that's.
So well, they they knew what they wanted, and I'm not a blind person or. What?
You don't really care what they look like.
Okay, so.
I do care what they want, but they wanted ones that you could move down from the top, pull up from the bottom. And I'm not familiar with that, they have them, so I kinda let her pick them out, I will get with her and and we'll.
And if that's the case, if you wanna give her the go ahead, give her the go ahead to do that, and if there's another. Um outfit or another supplier that we can deal with or maybe check, so we, I mean, we we should check at least one.
Well, we'll try to get two or three bids, right, okay?
Yeah, I mean, we're not gonna mold it up again for.
Right.
Um, okay, you good with that, move, uh contact her and move forward and let her move forward with it, if that's the case, yeah.
If she's here today, I will go right on there when I leave here.
I think I seen her out there, yes, uh speaking with Jared, when we talked about the wash machine and such, um he said there's still a couple trees up there that need to come down.
Yes.
And do you intend to take them down?
Yes, I do.
Okay, cuz he would like to have them down so we can stump grand in before.
My, I I got the question there also, uh when we do that, can we? Keep Danny, the part-time guy out there and take him up with there, so we could have as many people as we can clean it out. I don't know if you've seen the trees, but they're really bushy, a lot of limbs, we'd like to cut them down and clean them up in one day.
You're talking Bobby and Danny, correct?
Yes.
Yes, I don't have an issue with that.
Okay.
And then uh as far as disposal, I mean, if somebody runs firewood, that's more than they can.
It's spoken for already.
Okay. And. Are we considering?
I don't know if that'll happen, but yeah.
Are we still considering, um in your timeframe, is put an access door in that? I wanna call it the file cabinet room in that building up there, an outside access door.
Uh.
At the care facility.
Oh, oh, okay.
We talked about it several times.
If this is the deal, if you want it, we can do it. You tell me if you want me to go.
Are we talking a double door or you're just talking a four foot walk-in door?
I, what do you plan on putting in there?
I don't know.
Well.
But there's no access from either way right now, except from either end to in a walk-in door, so it does us absolutely no good.
I think what I suggested was just a four foot door, because I don't.
But I like the idea of trying to drive a lawnmower in there if I wanna do it, so does that take a double door? Well, we talked about a roll-up door.
Well, we're gonna have to look it up because there's a post right in the middle of it.
Yeah.
Is the problem.
So you still could maybe draw a six foot small garage door in there.
Again, I'll go up there today and I will.
When you're working with the trees.
Yeah, I'll do that too, yeah, I'll do it.
I mean, whatever your best inclination is, if we need a double door, I'd like to be able to drive the lawnmower in there, it's a, it's a nice room.
Yes.
Concrete floor.
Yes.
You know, and it's.
It's insulated, no show. So, yes.
We talked about them file cabinets in that room also, I want that.
Yeah.
They're still there, yeah. We.
Like twenty or thirty of them.
No, there's at least thirty-four of them, I think, in that case, but. Thirty-four, I think Lisa told us that one time, I remember that number for some reason. Yeah. So well, anyway, uh yeah, what are we gonna do with them?
Scrap model.
Yeah.
I say scrap them.
And donate to them?
We tried, we tried a couple times to ask the people if they wanted them.
Had that one guy, he thought he might want them.
Kinda like the pianos, that we took four years to get rid of, but we finally got rid of them.
Get rid of them.
Okay, we discussed the blinds and the door and the.
How about the handrail, where are we at there?
Slow with your, I had cleaned the garage out cuz it was getting so packed, I couldn't move the.
Don't get the handrail in.
Huh? Exactly, uh I will do that. Before you.
It, well, it's what I told Mike.
Independent contractor, come back after February second, finish.
Well, Mike asked me how I was coming, I told him I'd have it done before I left, I see the levels moved, I hope you got.
Somebody probably took it.
Yeah, no, I got it. I put it on the head, make sure I level headed it, good luck.
It went to one side, didn't it?
Thank you.
All right, have a good week.
You bet. Touch base with the blinds lady.
I will do it. I will do that, thank you.
Okay, Luann, we did that, uh boarder commission reports?
Oh, boy.
Oh, hang on there, what are we talking about?
For the uh county communication board.
Oh, yeah. I imagine.
That was quite interesting.
So. I guess I can, yeah, you tell me the new stuff, I can do, I'll give you the history a little bit. I've been involved with that a little bit over the past three or four or five years, and there's a lot of contention in it, I should say that. Um um and there seems to be some type of overlap with the nine-one-one board. And whose jurisdiction, and it was a rather large, large committee at one time. And we never could, we've discussed it several times, we never could come to a consensus, so I'm guessing that's what happened, but.
It's the committee that hasn't met in like ten years, right?
Well, we've talked about a lot of things.
So basically, I mean, it's spelled out, it was spelled out in the email when. It was sent out on, who's all on it, so obviously, the city of Macoka has three people, so they have their chief. Police chief, fire chief. Uh city manager are their kind of three voting parties, we have two part voting parties, um. Basically, kind of your police, anybody who has a police district, so like Preston has one. Um Sebula has one, Bellevue, um Andrew has their. A voting member from the fire department, so they're.
Because they stayed on and contributed.
Right, so um the smaller cities, AKA like Baldwin, Monmouth. Spring Brook, Saint Donatus, were all given the option of pulling. Out of it cuz they contributed such a minute amount. Andrew was the only one to agree to stay on, so that's why they have a voting party. But kind of one of the big things that's coming around is they're basically kind of pushing. To say that the nine-one-one. Communication center should be a county facility, not the city's facility. And then there's a fee that we all contribute. And a couple of areas feel that they're contributing. Maybe too much and some other areas aren't contributing enough and. They want that all relooked at because it hasn't really been looked at since nine-one-one came into.
And we discussed all that, and Sebula had brought that to their attention many times, cuz. I think Sebula was the most contentious of what they were paying compared to somebody else. I think it's only fair, we've seen them grasp in an email as far as options. I think it's only fair that each um municipality um support it.
Right.
They're using it.
So.
So wherever it comes from, it's gonna be expensed wherever it comes from.
Yes.
To someone, so that's the bottom line, and I can see it, the other, the other part of it is, we're not gonna switch communications. After we decided to leave it there when we voted on the new jail structure.
That was basically kind of part of the thing is, it's like, well, maybe this should have been talked about more than eight years ago than. At this point, but. So anyhow.
I can tell you from my time in the city that no time was Macoka ever not willing to give it up.
Oh, no. And that was kind of, kind of the whole thing, you know, there's, it's not just a matter of saying, boom, it's yours, you know, there's a lot. A lot of things to be considered and to be talked about and going forward. So anyhow, it sounds like the next meeting, we're all invited, so.
Okay, well, I mean, this conversation we need to have and and.
So and and a big, a big thing was even, how do you, how do you come up with who's paying what percent? You know, they don't want, they don't wanna go back to when it first started off, it was by. They tracked the number of calls because then what you get is per se, the city of Macoka saying, don't call in there because. We don't wanna be counted in them calls, and then you fall into a whole safety issue with your officers, your fire and all that stuff, so we don't wanna go to that. They talked about like population. You know, but then it's how do you get? You know, so if you did it by population, it actually costs a little over thirty-two dollars and fifty cents per person. Per, per area, for the population. You know, so do you charge?
So right now, it's, there's much, there's much, a lot of discrepancy in the amount per person, if you would. According to what Sebula's paying now, there's, there's a large discrepancy.
So. Yes and no, it could be more, it could be less, depending on what, what direction they go on this.
I would, I would say at this point, uh a lot of further discussion.
Yes, very much so. It was quite interesting.
Okay, thank you, Nim, for that, I know that was probably interesting.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
It was.
I just wanna throw out there, um I got the, it says Macoka River Water Management, I think that's this afternoon, I'll give an update next week, but. Just remember this Saturday's Together We Build, um it's the the side by A U T V A T V ride. It's their big fundraiser, kinda help them finishing out their project, starts at ten o'clock, um you can kinda jump on whenever, um. There's different levels you can, you could do the ride at, um places you can register, if you don't do it online, is the Horstman Club. Um Stewart and Andrew, Together We Build in Macoka, and you don't have to start at any one place, you can start wherever and circulate around, so just. That's a Saturday, so uh.
They appreciate your support?
With a nice dance up at Bellevue Horstman's Club.
Afterwards.
A meal and stuff like that, so.
Hundred percent goes to the, the uh, the extension office.
So.
We build the lens on.
And to go along with that, they're still selling their tiles and things like that, and they're basically trying, they have a very large. Donator who they're trying to get up to their matching grant for, so.
Again, a real worthwhile project, and there's all considerations, I mean, we have to consider a lot of different things with that building when it's complete, so. Things we need to talk about too yet, going forward, uh had a meeting with the. E C I A and Tourism here and Economic Alliance and Bellevue. Last week after our meeting, uh very interesting, the gal from uh Dubuque Tourism had a lot of great ideas, her marketing gal and. She very, she was very, she was impressive, I'll say that, she had a lot of good ideas and. So moving forward, they have a small grant that they obtained and how we can distribute between uh Jackson Jones and Dubuque. County School with it, so we'll get a piece of that, probably.
Just on a side note, kind of another thing going forward, and I don't know where we propose this at. But is there any way possible that after sitting in here for the last ten months that we can um. Get our packet information more than as they come here and present? So that we have time to look at it and research and make.
Formulate questions.
Yeah, type of deal, I mean. Request that what they're submitting to the board on Tuesday be here by Friday, so it could be emailed out to us.
I guess normally, we'll get enough information or or the packet or plat, if it will. Um a lot of times, I don't give us enough time to run out and look at the, at the, play at the. So, yeah, I guess the maybe more, a little more information a little sooner for us would be to just to do some research on it.
Right, or so we're not having to sit here and say, well, you know, you're looking at, you're looking at bids. You know, could them have been sent to you on Friday, so you can compare that, yeah, you're comparing the same warranty, we're not having to sit here and say. Okay, are you comparing apples to apples, are you comparing? You know.
They review them, and then they get formulated on a spreadsheet. Why can't we get that in our packet beforehand, so we can look at it and see what's going on, I completely agree.
Cuz uh. And I think somebody dropped the ball there, but.
Well, I just think in.
It's been on.
In general.
Different bids and different things that have come forward, I think, and it's.
It would just be handier.
So I guess with that being said, maybe Luann write up a um email to department heads at the board. Or is requesting information uh beforehand that they can do research and question and ask questions. Like this morning, I'm running down to the. question and ask questions. Like this morning, I'm running down to the county attorney asking questions fifteen minutes before a meeting, you know, which I couldn't get any answers to before. He's busy also too and that was.
Right.
So maybe, you know, just send a letter out, uh, and include us. Maybe a draft first.
Sure, you wanna give a deadline?
Yeah, 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 because that's the rule I do ask. When people come in, I do ask that there's a handout that I can send to you ahead of time. Sometimes I.
Include it in the packet, yeah.
Yeah, because you know, like when Todd comes in and he has several different things, a lot of times we haven't seen it before. Or when Lori comes in or whoever, you know, if they, you know, preliminary plat. Where's this at? You know, it's usually our first question because it just says preliminary plat or, you know, and it's, it'd be nice to have it ahead of time so we can look and make any kind of preliminary investigations. We have more questions versus, uh, you know, okay.
And I do try to send to you anything that I get as soon as I get it. I don't, I don't save it till Friday.
Well, just send it and just all scan it in one and and send it one.
So kind of, yeah, when we get our board packet, it would all be.
So like when the engineer gives you their agenda? Their supporting documentation should be in there, so they scan it and you can send it.
Oh, okay, alright.
Rather than, we're just talking about a road in section
Yeah.
thirty-three.
Yeah, because usually I just send you the agenda.
Yeah, no, if we can get, you know, okay, we're gonna talk about this entrance, here's where it is. If we're gonna talk about the gas bids or whatever, here's the spreadsheet with everything broken out. This is what we're talking about for purchasing the truck, you know, that kind of stuff, so.
It's a digital file. We don't have to print all of that out, but you guys can look at it ahead of time.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, you don't have to put that all out, put it in a book. We can see it in an email, but.
Kind of go green.
I'm okay with that.
Anything else before the board?
Motion adjourned.
Have a motion and second to adjourn. All of the favors say aye.
Alright.
Close, same side. Motion carried. Thank you all and have a great day.
You too.